All right, welcome to the October 26, 2020, meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 18, and Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: WCTV, Channel 9, Comcast, Xfinity, Channel 37, Verizon, FiOS, and livestream at wctv.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted except for the portion of the meeting designated for public comment, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656, enter meeting ID 860-3746-6583, then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers wishing, using this feature will be placed in queue in the order in which they enter the prompt. In the event that, despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. I will note that all members are present. I will also note that members of the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Hull are also wearing an item of pink in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I do want to thank our friends at WCTV as well as Andrew Fredette from the town's IT department for facilitating this meeting. We are a little bit late starting tonight's meeting as we did have an executive session that began at 6 o'clock for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or other acquisition of real property at map R1 parcel 6A on Route 125 and map R1 parcels 5 and 5A on 141 Andover Street in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, and further to consider the executive session minutes from April 13, 2020, July 2020, July 20, 2020, August 17, 2020, and September 14, 2020, in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 22. I'd ask the members to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have the transmitting of the Treasury warrants, number 16, 16A, 17, and 17A. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Kyra, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. We do have public comment. Mr. Fredette advised me that we do have a number of individuals.
I'm sorry, interrupt you. Number three, minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have the minutes from August 17, 2020. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kyra, seconded by Mr. DePamme. A discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, passes. Now we have public comments. Mr. Fredette, could you let the first caller in? I'd ask the caller that they identify themselves by name and address.
There are, maybe, two of these themselves.
How would a caller unmute themselves? Mr. Fredette?
Yeah.
How would a caller unmute himself? If you are waiting to speak during public comment, please press star nine to unmute yourself.
I didn't hear any of the meeting.
All right, I think, Mr. Fredette, are we speaking to the number ending in 7029?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You are on for public comment. Go ahead.
I just, well, I couldn't hear any of the meeting.
You are on during the meeting.
No, I wasn't. I wasn't getting any audio.
The executive session was not, that was closed to the public.
Okay. What was the outcome?
The executive session is called because the board would like to discuss something that having an open discussion on it would put the town in a detrimental position or hurt the town's position. So there was, I mean, there's really no actual outcome in terms of finality, but in terms of the two pieces of property, certainly the town can't acquire anything without a town meeting vote, so there's nothing, nothing final to report.
I understand the discussion was about acquisition of parcel 6A behind Andover Street. Is that right?
There was discussion. Sir, could you please just identify yourself, just for our minutes?
Sure. My name is Caleb Nichols.
Any address?
114 Andover Street.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. So what was your question?
What does the town want to do?
The town is merely exploring options at this point.
And what are the options?
Again, we're not at a point where there's anything to even decide.
Okay. So how do I find out? I just move along.
So maybe if I could help, so just to be clear, if the town ultimately, if the Board of Selectmen wished to pursue an option with, with the possibility of acquiring property, that would ultimately have to be put forward at a town meeting, so there would be an article prepared as part of the town meeting warrant, and then it would be discussed at a selectman's meeting in an open session. It would ultimately be reviewed by the Finance Committee, which meets in open session and is open for public comment. There would be a public hearing in advance of the town meeting, again, for the public to hear about any proposal and to offer comment, and then the ultimate decision would be made at a town meeting, which of course is open to anyone who's a registered voter, and they would be able to vote yea or nay.
All right, Mr. Fredette, do we have another caller? Mr. Nichols, did you have another question?
No, I'm just a little, I can't hear a little bit.
Okay, so I can, I understand the microphone is closer to me than it is to Mr. Hull, so just to recap so that you can hear, that the process that the town would have to go through to acquire any piece of property would have to include open discussion at subsequent meetings of the Board of Selectmen and also the Finance Committee, and ultimately a discussion during town meeting where any registered voter in town could then go to, speak to, and then ultimately vote yea or nay on. At this point, we're not at a point where, we're far, far before anything that, so certainly if discussions end up leading to something where we would be able to present the town with an option, there would be several discussions that would be held in open meetings where questions be able to be asked and answered, and we would have something more concrete to present, but ultimately, the governing body of the town of Wilmington is the residents at the period town meeting.
Right. And will the town, will the town keep up the rest of this meeting, or how many others are there?
They're all posted. They're, they're posted on the town's website. They're also covered during, on WCTV. They're also covered extensively on social media as well, so certainly if and when the time comes where this is something that, that discussions will be happening, certainly if you're a resident of town, you should be well aware.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fredette? Do we have another caller? Yes. Do you press star nine? Could you identify your, your name and address, please?
Certainly. My name is Ethan Sawyer. I live at 58 Long Street.
Evening, Mr. Sawyer.
Hi. So I think, there's a little bit of a lag time, so I think normally when, when you call in, or when I call in, to listen to a meeting, we can hear all the audio live as it's happening, and today, you know, when we're on hold, when you call in, there's no audio coming through on the phone line, so I think that was maybe what the first caller was trying to get at as well. So it's a little bit confusing to the people on the phone, because we don't actually hear any live audio, so we're a little bit behind because either watching it on TV or over the internet.
Okay, just so that we're clear, can you hear me well now, Mr. Sawyer?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay, and then, so besides that, I guess I did want to just comment on moving the, the public comments up earlier in the meeting. I'm not sure what the reasoning behind it was, but I kind of, I prefer it certainly at the end of the, or closer to the end of the meeting, because it just gave a better opportunity to make comments about what was actually discussed during the meeting tonight, where now we really kind of only have an opportunity to make a comment on something that happened either two weeks ago, or maybe even a month ago, depending on how much time passes in between the meetings. So I feel like it's difficult enough to participate remotely, and, you know, as evidenced tonight, some technical issues, and obviously everyone's trying to do the best they can. Always appreciate being able to make comments during meetings, but certainly it would be more helpful to me, I think, if we could make a comment closer to the end, after you've kind of heard everything in the meeting. And then beyond that, I also just wanted to make a comment about the OPM search that's going on right now, and I think it's something that's in the correspondence for tonight, having to do with the money that's still outstanding for the high school. I know when I was looking at the MSBA website, it looked like for the high school that was finished back in 2015, that we're still, the town has still owed almost $3 million for reimbursement from that project, so I'm hoping that maybe we'll hear a little bit more about that. It looked like on the spreadsheet for the correspondence tonight, that it was somewhere around $1.5 million. On the MSBA website, it looked like $3 million, but either way, it seems like a lot of money for a school that was done five days ago. And I know even in our interest rate, which is low, the town, if we're having to counter that cost for five years, you know, if it's $3 million bucks, that's about $1.5 million in interest by my math, and if it's $1.5 million you're carrying, it's still 250 grand of interest, which is significant, so hopefully that will be getting wrapped up soon, and I don't know if there's a way, I mean, I don't know if that's because of OPM or the town, or just the way the funding goes from the state, just takes a long time, or what it is, but hopefully that's something that we won't have in issue with again going forward for any of these other projects, for the senior center or the town hall. And I think that was really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sawyer, with respect to the placement of public comments, certainly you can appreciate that times have certainly changed in the last seven and a half months, and accessibility is something that I want to prioritize just in my role as a member of this board. I don't want to constructively prevent someone from being able to make a comment. Sometimes, as you're well aware, our meetings can run late, and they can be over at 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, and I don't want people to be having to play the guessing game as to when a meeting might be drawing close to an end and then driving here or waiting in the parking lot to then make a public comment, as we are not able to have members of the audience physically present for these meetings. So at least the rationale behind having public comments at the beginning of the meeting would allow members of the community some measure of predictability, and also the benefit of being able to speak to members of this board prior to votes that might be taking place on the agenda and prior to appointments, so that if any issue or concern is of particular importance to you, you are able to address your elected members of this board with that prior to this board taking that issue up for discussion or decision. So certainly it's, there are limitations to having them either at the beginning or the end, but this is an attempt of, for me, to try and make this board more accessible to residents, as we are certainly social distancing and not as able to physically interact with members of the community as we are certainly used to.
Sure.
With respect to the OPM question, I suspect that that particular concern will be addressed as the senior center OPM committee is making their decision in terms of the costing of it, and I know we will be getting an update on where that, that process is tonight, so certainly I can expect to be paying attention, and your concern is noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Fredette, do we have anyone else? 978-657-0621, if you could just press star nine to unmute yourself. All right, and if you could just say your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, it's Jerry Corgan at 12 Treasure Hill Road.
Good evening, Mr. Corgan. How are you?
Good. It's actually a star six to unmute, not star nine.
Okay. Apologize for that.
I guess I was curious, it sounded like I was calling about the R1 6A parcel, and you mentioned the town was looking to acquire, does the town already own that land?
The parcel 6A is on 129, not on Andover Street. The parcels 5 and 5A are on Andover Street. The town does not own any of those, those lots.
5 and 5A?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so is there any discussion what's going on with 6A, or are you looking to acquire 5 and 5A? Is it part of that? I don't see 5 and 5A as a part of that.
So this discussion was merely preliminary to examine possible options that the town may pursue with respect to any of the listed parcels.
So where exactly, I'm looking at the map, and I don't see 5 and 5A. Where exactly are they?
So the property, if you are able to identify where the Public Works Garage is on Andover Street, it's on the right as you're heading north towards 125, you'll see the Public Works Garage, and then just beyond that is parcel 5, and then beyond that is 5A. Parcel 5 is four acres and...
Are they on 5 and 6A, or are they on the opposite side of Andover Street?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I guess I was, I guess I was up early to the parcel 6A.
All right, was there anything, anything else, Mr. Corgan?
No, I just, I thought it was up early, I thought we were talking about 6A, and I wanted to see, you know, 5A, 5A, does it have anything to do with 6A?
I don't think it is. It is on the agenda, is 6A, it's on 125, and parcels 5 and 5A on Andover Street.
Okay, so you were talking, you're talking about the town acquiring 5 and 5A, or you're in preliminary discussion, but is there anything planned for 6A?
Right now, there's nothing planned for either property. We're just at a preliminary discussion to, to discuss options.
Right, but I heard, I heard the term acquire, so the acquire, but then you're not talking acquiring 6A, right? Because the town already owns that one, is that correct?
Are you talking 6A on Andover Street?
Yeah.
Correct. We would not, that was not part of any discussion.
Okay, yeah, it runs from Andover Street over to, or range from 3 and over to, over to 125. All right, that's parcel 6A. Okay, I, maybe I misunderstood, it sounded like you were talking about the town was in preliminary discussion of acquiring 6A. Like, the town...
Mr. Chair, can I just clarify, it's, the executive session, for the purposes of discussion, is for purchase, exchange, lease, or other acquisition, so it's not just acquisition, it could be exchange, it could be purchase, or it could be lease, so it falls under any of those options.
Okay, well, I had a hard time hearing that when you said there, so...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reframe it just because the microphone's closer to me. Mr. Kyra's comment was that the executive discussion, I'm sorry, the executive session was for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or other acquisition of those properties, so just a preliminary discussion, we're not anticipating any breaking news, but just a preliminary option to explore alternatives.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Fredette, is there any other members of the public for public comment? All right, we'll move on to our first appointment with our Health Director, Shelley Newhouse.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
All right. So, we last met with you about two weeks ago, and circumstances have changed a bit. I was hoping you could speak to where we are.
Right now, in Wilmington, we have 27 active positives, and probably a little bit over 40 in quarantine, and the rise of cases can, you know, be attributed to, the rise in quarantines, actually, let me start there, can be attributed to some, several parties that were, have been being held in Wilmington, and the positives are just different kids, different people that I just don't have any connection yet. I have a few, but that's really where we're just trying to connect all the dots.
So are you seeing any trends?
I'm seeing trends with parties that are happening, in social gatherings, where people aren't proper, wearing their masks, they're not proper social distancing, engaging in risky behaviors like that, that's where we're seeing our cases rise, and we're seeing that everywhere, you know, not just Wilmington is seeing that, so it's something that we need to really look at, and people start paying more attention, and I kind of feel like they have almost like COVID fatigue, they're just tired of anything COVID-related, but now that school has started, and everywhere pretty much, we, it's like we're almost in another cycle of cases and positives and quarantines.
I wanted to open it up to members of the board that may have questions for Ms. Newhouse. Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Newhouse. Two quick questions. First of all, thank you very much for the update. Thanks for all you're doing, trying to keep the public updated on the latest numbers. I know I got some great feedback on your pie chart again this week, so kudos to you for that. I think people really appreciate that. I do have a question about the current number of positives, without giving us too much detail, of course, of the 27, could you estimate how many are in the same household? Are you seeing any, is it families, at least 27 separate households, or are there, you're seeing like a mother and father, a husband and wife, children?
I think I have five households that have more than one positive in them, and some of those have three, three or more positives.
Okay. Thank you very much. And my second question for you is, getting back to the spring, it seems like a lifetime ago, but you, believe it or not, have been doing a great job ever since this started, putting out information with the latest numbers, and when you started, it looked a little bit different. So I looked at our neighbors in Billerica, their latest post, they had 30 active cases, so somewhat close to what we have, but they also list the recovered cases as 668. Now, I know for a while you were doing that. Is that something we're able to do from your office to, to bring that back?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. Yeah, so the reason I ask, a couple residents had commented that it was really nice when you were including that, and they didn't know if we could, if we could continue to do that, that'd be great.
I feel like in the spring, we were in the cycle of the elderly, the nursing homes, and that's where we had most of our positives, and now this go-around, this cycle, we're seeing it more with the younger people.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes, Mr. Newhouse, thank you for all of your work, and I'm sure you unfortunately might get busy as the cold weather sets in. Just a quick question on the actives in the quarantine. The 27 actives, is that part of the quarantine, or are those two separate, you know, are they classified separately? So you have 27, and then you have 40, for a total of 67? Or do you have 27 powdered the 40, so you only have an additional 13?
No, those are separate. So when you're a positive case, you're considered to be isolating. When you are a quarantine, you are just a contact of a positive case, so they're each separate.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so, hey, Shelley, it's Jo Marie. I don't know if you can see us or not. This isn't really a question as much as, I'm going to get on my soapbox again, because I know that you, you're tired of saying it, and I'm not getting tired of saying it, and I think especially speaking as a parent of two high school kids, right now, you know, I just want to put a couple reminders out there. I know we're all in quarantine fatigue, for sure, but the reality is, is that is one party really going to be worth the rest of your fall sports season and the ability to go back to your classrooms? I think we really, as parents, need to kind of re-up our emphasis with these kids on, on doing the right thing as much as we can, and I say that knowing, I'm sure my kids are just as bad about wearing masks all the time, or, you know, keeping their... time or, you know, keeping their social distancing. So I'm not saying that from kind of a preachy position, but I feel like we're all fatigued. We're all tired of dealing with the school situation, whether it's remote or hybrid or whatever. But this is the time that we need to remind our kids, especially and remind other parents kind of in our, our peer group, that we have to stay vigilant because when we slip up like this, it, it just sets everything back even more, it feels like. And I know the kids are frustrated by it, I know I'm frustrated by it. And just, you know, again, focus on, on what we need to do and not, not on the other stuff, I think. So thank you for continuing to do it. I appreciate the, you know, I will, I will disclose, like, my son was on the soccer team when there was an exposure from another town's team. And, you know, just as a parent, I, I will commend the Board of Health and Shelley for getting us the information, for keeping the situation calm, for making sure we didn't panic and, and worry more than we needed to. And I think, you know, it was, it was great to see kind of the information that was given to both the athletes, the students, the parents, to make sure that, that they did the right thing for that. So I, I, as a parent, I again, just want to thank you for, for the work you're putting in on this. And, you know, we're all learning as we go and it just seems like it's never ending at this point. But I appreciate, we all appreciate that you continue to plug away.
It's, it's really so important that you answer my call when the local Board of Health or the contact tracing collaborative calls and really try to be forthcoming in letting me know who the contacts were and, or what I ask. I mean, when I call someone and I, I don't tell them that, you know, Jane told me that you were a contact. It's, it's not like that. It's, you know, you were identified as a contact of a positive. And that's as far as it goes. They don't know, you know, nobody knows who the positive was and nobody knows who identified you as that contact. So I think people are a little nervous about, um, they feel like they're telling on their friends or their family or, or whatever. But it's, it's not, you know, there's no, they're not going to get in trouble by the Board of Health or anything. I'll tell you guys a quick story. Last weekend, there was a party and I couldn't get all the contacts out of the party. So just on this past Friday, I had a positive student at the high school. Now, that positive student came out of the party last weekend, so had I known about this person, I could have quarantined him and he wouldn't have been at school. So now that one person is making me have to quarantine almost 20 more people, all because no one wanted to originally tell me that they were part of a contact. So again, I can't stress enough how, how important it is to really answer the call or, I mean, you know, it's, or if you know of someone, you can always just call and report it to the local Board of Health and we'll do our investigation and see what happens.
Mr. Palmer?
Shelley, thank you for everything you're doing. The only question I have is, are you finding that you're getting more resistance from people to name names?
Definitely. Because I think that people are just, they're just, like I said earlier, almost COVID fatigued. They want to get back to normalcy. They want to, you know, I want to get back to normalcy, but we're going backwards in, with this, and we need to just keep moving forward. And, you know, nobody wants to hear, see that on their caller ID that it's me calling. But you just have to answer the phone. And, you know, I would say that everyone, the majority of people that I talk to are just great. They're fantastic. But then just, just those couple, a few, just one person can just set us back or, with tons of contacts.
Thank you. Ms. Newhouse, you, I think it's been said, but the work, the hours, the, the effort that you and your department have been putting in for the last seven and a half months has been a Herculean task. And it's very much appreciated, your diligence to help protect the residents in, in the town. So we know you're, you're not going to get COVID fatigue, even though all of us are certainly frustrated with how life has changed and we can look back and want normalcy to return. But we appreciate your diligence in helping us get there and keep up the good work. Okay, so our next appointment is with Christine Tuma Conway, the Town Clerk, regarding an update on preparations for the state election on November 3rd, 2020, and receipt of grant funds. Maybe if it's, if there's not so much interference, if WCTV can pick it up, then certainly, yeah, that might be worth trying. Thank you, Mr. Ferret. Ms. Tuma Conway, if you could press star nine, just unmute yourself. You are, you are live, Ms. Conway, how are you? Hi, Ms. Conway, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing well. Well, we were hoping that you could provide an update on what folks should expect on November 3rd.
Right now? I'm sorry, I didn't realize that you were in the middle of the meeting. Yes, I'd love to do that. So we have settled in on our, our setup for the meeting, for the, for the election. And what we've decided to do is to color code our precincts. So we'll have people, we have two entrances. One entrance is the main entrance, and then the second entrance is from the rear of the building. And we'll have people at both of those entrances to make sure that we, that people know where their precinct is. But each precinct has been color coded, so, you know, people in precinct one will be told to go to the blue, to the blue signs and so on and so forth. So we'll have people throughout the auditorium sort of as guides and also what we're going to call people movers, for folks who really need help actually getting to their precincts. So they'll walk in either, either one of the two doors, they'll be greeted and their, their precinct is entertained. They'll be told where to go and, and, and the flow is, I know that you have a copy of the memo that I provided to, to Mr. Hull as well as the, as well as the, the schematic of the, of the auditorium. So hopefully you're looking at that. And you can see that the flow of people is going to be to come in and to walk around one side of the building and then go into their precincts and then exit out, kind of sep, in a sep, you know, at the other end of where the precinct starts. And out the door they'll go or back down to the back of the building to exit. People that are, that need a little help getting around will have access to the motorized scooters that we had talked about in our last, in our last meeting. And also, there'll be wheelchairs and there'll be people to help, people to get around also. When they drive in, they will take a right into the parking lot from, from Fordham Road. And there will be signs leading to the back of the building where the handicap parking is. There'll be police officers on both the side and in the rear of the building. So wherever they enter the building to do their voting from and then come out, they'll be driv, they'll be guided to exit from around the backside of the building. So the traffic will be coming in that first entrance and then leaving and exiting through the, through the backside of the building. So the police have looked at it and the DPW folks have looked at it and we feel like that's probably the best way to have traffic flow. Sign holders will be allowed to be out front, in front of the building, either on the grassy area directly in front of the building right before you go into the parking lot or down along Fordham Road. Inside the building, as I said, we'll have people kind of all over the place. And the good news is, we've, we've processed a lot of early ballots already, so I don't think it's going to be, I don't think there are going to be lines and lines of people at all. I think it's going to flow in and out very well.
Did any members have questions for Ms. Conway?
Kind of a question and a comment. Tina, how, you said that you've processed a lot of early ballots already. Do you know kind of like what the percentage is of how many people have already voted in Wilmington right now?
I do. We've actually had a 42, 46% turnout before, a week before elections.
That's fantastic. And I wanted to just thank you. I've gotten the postcard, I've gotten a reverse 911 already, I think I've gotten an email. Your efforts in communicating in the, the early voting, the mail-in voting and the, the election day location change, I think have been above and beyond at this point. Hopefully, you know, every resident knows how they can, how they can vote at this point. And I just commend you for all your hard work and, and making sure that that all got deployed the way it did.
It's a great staff that I have and the Recreation Department is, is Clerk's Office South now, so they've, they've been helping us out. And we've had a lot of election workers in, helping us running early voting and helping us to process ballots. It's really been a team effort, but, but it's all, it has all worked out well. As far as the, the election itself and the planning for the election, I, I know that there's a spreadsheet that's attached to the memo that, that I provided to Mr. Hull and it shows the expenses that we've incurred as a result of moving to the Shriners. But also there are some savings because we'll probably have less personnel in certain areas, so there'll be some savings. And we, we're able to get a grant from a philanthropic, philanthropic group that's interested in helping local election officials to run the elections this year. So we got an $8,600 grant. And for all the additional expenses we're going to incur, all but about 300 of that will be covered by that grant.
Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chair, yeah, just to stay on the finances, yeah, I, I did notice, or I didn't notice anything for a DPW or buildings, I don't know who's doing the setup and the breakdown. You, you did mention quite a bit of everything else, but I...
That's going to be done during normal hours, so that would be done regardless of whether or not we were at other sites or whether or not we were, we were at the Shriners. So there is, there's no really additional cost, there's not going to be overtime costs except for the, the stuff that the, items that are mentioned in the, in the spreadsheet. All of the setup is done during normal business hours, just as it always is when you have to go to all the three different locations.
Okay, great. And just one last question. I know my colleagues have received, or at least two of them that I know have received the postcard. I, I haven't yet, but maybe coming.
Postcards were scheduled to go out on October, the week of October 12th. I, you know, I guess it's possible that you just didn't get yours.
All right, no, that's good, it's good to know that some of them went out. Yeah. Has the, I noticed that it says the Recreation Department, Elder Services and the Library. And I, I did bring this up at one of the last meetings to see if the schools were also, are they cooperative and maybe sent...
The schools, if you read the memo that, that presented to Mr. Hull that I think he gave to you, the schools were able to help us with doing a, we're doing both reverse 911 calls and we're also doing calls using the school system. And that's, that call went out several times over the course of the last few weeks.
Ms. Conway, I think...
Ms. Conway, I, I didn't hear what you said, but I wasn't finished with my question either. So maybe you can repeat yourself after I'm done with the question? That's okay. I was just wondering if the school department was sending out email notices, email blasts as well, and if we're able to use the message board in front of the high school. I had mentioned that at the last meeting and Mr. Hull was going to check into that for us.
I have not been in touch with the schools about doing any kind of email blasts, no. I could do that, if you'd like.
Well, I, I think to get the word out, they have, you know, the, the ability to reach all of the parents that have students, I would...
They do, but they also, we also have their phone numbers and we've been making calls to their homes using, using their, their call system. Like email sent, and I'm sure that we can do that.
Yeah, that's fine, the more the merrier. Let's, let's see what they say, whether they, they want to help you or that they're too busy, which I'm sure they are busy. Just a, just another avenue to, to reach the residents, that's all.
So just, just to jump in on this, with regard to the sign board, the, I did reach out to Paul Ruggiero and they do not have an electronic sign board. I think the sign board that may have been there at some point in time was one of ours and we do have those deployed. I know there's, there's one that's across from the registry. So we are using the electronic sign boards. The only board that I'm aware of in front of the Roman House is the manual one.
That's the one I'm referring to.
Oh, okay, I, I thought it was reference to electronic sign board. Okay.
No, no, the, the sign board that's right in front of the high school where it says, be kind?
Yeah.
I was just wondering if that particular weekend, we could put in, you know, voting is at the Shriners Auditorium.
Right, yeah.
Just, I'm just thinking of different ways to reach out to the residents to make sure that they're notified.
Any other members with comments or questions? I, I happened to walk by the library with my family earlier, or actually, a few days ago and noticed a number of lawn signs in front of the library, so I was wondering if Mr. DePalma?
Tina, I just want to compliment you and your staff.
you could speak to that, to us tonight.
You're doing a great job over there in tough times.
Sure. So I'm Brittany Tuttle, the Teen Services Librarian at the Wilmington Memorial Library,
We appreciate everything you're doing and look forward to getting our elections done.
and thank you for having me this evening. I'm excited to tell you about our Four Freedoms Initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conway.
So for this initiative, we're excited to partner with the artist-led organization for
Sorry, Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
freedoms and collaborate with other Massachusetts libraries to make sure the voices of Wilmington
Just want to say thank you very much and I look forward to seeing you next Tuesday. Thanks to you and your staff.
teens in grades six through 12 are heard during the election season in the form of lawn
Now, thank you, Ms. Conway. Have a good night. We're now on to our 7:45 appointment.
signs in front of the library, which will remain in place through November 4th.
Brittany Tuttle, the Assistant Teen Librarian regarding Four Freedoms Signs.
And you've already seen them on the lawn, there's about 12 out right now, they're double-sided, so I brought some examples. So here are some blank ones. So Four Freedoms is an artist-led organization that models and increases civic engagement. So it, it's helping to expand what participation in democracy looks like and to reshape conversations about politics. So I became aware of Four Freedoms last year when I went I, I happened to walk by the library with, uh, my family earlier, or actually, a few days ago and noticed a number of lawn signs in front of the library, so I was wondering if you could speak to that, uh, to us tonight.
Sure. Um, so, um, I'm Brittany Tuttle, the Teen Services Librarian at the Wilmington Memorial Library, and thank you for having me this evening. Um, I'm excited to tell you about our For Freedoms Initiative. So, for this initiative, we're excited to partner with the artist-led organization For Freedoms and collaborate with other Massachusetts libraries to make sure the voices of Wilmington teens in grades six through twelve are heard during the election season in the form of lawn signs in front of the library, which will remain in place through November 4th. Um, and you've already seen them on the lawn. There's about twelve out right now. They're double-sided, so I brought some examples. So here are some blank ones. So For Freedoms is an artist-led organization that models and increases civic engagement. Um, so it, it's helping to expand what participation and democracy looks like and to reshape conversations about politics. Um, so I became aware of For Freedoms last year when I went to, um, a conference at Simmons University called School Library Leadership Base Camp. And I saw Luke Kirkland, um, who's the, uh, Teen Services Department Head, the Waltham Public Library speak, as well as, um, his teens in their Real Talk Teen Program. So they were talking about all of the innovative teen-led events that they lead, including, um, these lawn signs, which gives teens the opportunity to express the issues that are important to them and their community during the election season, um, because they might not be eligible to vote. Um, so the WPL began the partnership with For Freedoms and has since invited other libraries to offer this to their, um, to their teen patrons as well. So, um, we're collaborating with them and some other area libraries. Um, so the signs are structured this way in these phrases because they're based on President Roosevelt's For Freedoms. Uh, freedom of speech, freedom of worship, freedom from want and freedom from fear. So the signs are aiming to encourage community discussion and civic action and, um, teens are invited to select the appropriate prompt through a Google form on our website, um, which is found under willamlibrary.org/for-freedoms. And then they submit it anonymously and then I write out the signs for them. Um, and then we've also partnered with the town Clerk's Office, um, to have some preregistration and registration voter drive. And, um, we are also offering a bookmark, um, with all kinds of voting information about Wilmington, as well as a webpage. Um, so I brought examples of those if you'd like them. Um, and we also have a mock election for, um, kids to participate in at the library. So, that's what we've been working on.
I think it's an excellent initiative that, that you and, uh, the library staff are doing. Always, always good ideas coming out of the library and certainly at, uh, valued thing to, uh, encourage civic engagement amongst, uh, grades six through twelve. So I did wanna open it up to comments or questions from fellow board members. Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brittany, thank you so much for being here and your presentation and certainly you've come to the right place. If anybody can appreciate a good lawn sign, it's the five of us. And, uh, we certainly know that the weather can be a challenge for those and we really appreciate it. I think it's a great idea. I really appreciate you and the library staff, uh, taking this on and, uh, thanks for going to the conference and, and finding this new initiative to bring to Wilmington. So thank you and, and really, it's another great way that the library helps engage young people on this time, particularly around the area of civics and we really appreciate that. What a great way to get our young people educated regardless of how you feel about a particular candidate. I think we can all agree it's very important that our young people, uh, educate themselves about every candidate and every race. So, uh, I think it's a great initiative. Thank you so much and, uh, I wish you well.
Thank you.
Simone?
Sure. I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Selectman Bendel said and just also to, to note, you know, right now especially, what you're doing is even more important because I think a lot of civics teachers and, you know, teachers wanting to kind of really get a mesh in, in election and, and kind of the, the role of an election in our society aren't, aren't able to do it in the same way. And I think the fact that you've come up with this, um, in a way that the, the town can see, we drive by the, the library and we actually see it in action, is just wonderful. So thank you for, for finding this program and for implementing it. Um, and I hadn't heard of it, so thank you, Chair, for, for, um, getting it on the agenda tonight, 'cause I think it's really important for people to know that this is available and that, that children, you know, though they can't vote, are given a, a voice in town as well.
Yeah, I, I echo my colleagues' comments. This is great. It's a great idea. Kudos to, to the, to you and the library for, for putting this forward for, for the, uh, for the students. Are, are other communities doing this as well? I haven't seen these signs other than over at our library.
Yes, um, so Waltham has a really big installation of them. Um, they've been doing it for a few years. You can also see, um, their signs online. They have a, a great, um, album of them to look through. Uh, Burlington also has, um, a lot of signs out in front of their school and the library. Brookline, Wayland, and I'm sure I'm missing some. Burlington, if I didn't already mention them. Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's very impressive what you're doing and, uh, it's a great initiative that you bring forward. Uh, I hope you continue on with it.
Oh, thank you. I hope so too. There's still time to submit them, any teens who are listening right now.
Ms. Tuttle, I'll, I'll give you another opportunity to just mention that website that, that students can go to.
Sure. So, um, we have two places where you can look. We have willamlibrary.org backslash voter resources and then willamlibrary.org/forfreedoms. There's a banner image, um, scrolling through our website and you just click on it and it'll bring you to the voter resources. And right at the top are the kids' election stuff and, um, the teens for freedoms.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Ms. Tuttle.
Is it okay if I just?
Oh, absolutely.
Please do.
If you, I can take some and pass it through to you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brittany.
Right? Yeah, I'll give one to Jack too.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Mr. Fordette, do we have, uh, our representatives in the EPA? Mr. Fordette, should we be speaking into this microphone? Okay. Mr. Cashwell, Ms. Jennings, and Mr. Fontaine, uh, thank you for joining us this evening.
Hello? Can you guys hear me? Hello?
You are all on.
Okay. Uh, hello, my name is Lynn Jennings. I'm with the Environmental Protection Agency in our, uh, regional office in Boston. Uh, good evening and thank you for giving us some time on your agenda this evening. Um, the purpose of our, uh, presentation today is to really inform the town and the selectmen of some upcoming investigation, uh, investigative work around the Olin Superfund site. Um, this work has been approved by EPA and it's part of our ongoing data gap investigation for the site. This has been explained, you know, previously as we were, uh, proceeding with our proposal for a cleanup plan. Um, reason why we wanted to, uh, conduct this presentation this evening is the investigation is gonna be, uh, involve the use of a, a low-flying helicopter and, uh, we wanted to make sure folks were aware of this, 'cause we suspected that the activity may, um, may result in, you know, inquiries from local, um, residents and, and people near, near the site. James Cashwell from Olin, uh, is also on the line and he's gonna provide a more, um, detailed presentation of, of the investigation and what the equipment looks like. I also wanna inform you all that we are conducting additional outreach. Uh, in addition to this meeting tonight, well, EPA is gonna issue a press release and Olin will be also placing flyers in, uh, mailboxes of, uh, folks living in the area where the investigation is gonna take place. So this presentation is really for, um, awareness purposes, again, because of the nature of, uh, of the investigation and use of a helicopter. Um, I would also say, as many of you know, we, the agency, uh, over the summer issued its proposed cleanup plan for the site. Um, actually, today is the final day of our, uh, comment period on our proposed cleanup plan. Uh, the agency will now be compiling all the comments, evaluating the comments, compiling and reviewing the comments received on our cleanup plan for the Olin site. We don't expect to issue our final cleanup plan or, or our cleanup decision, including an interim cleanup plan for groundwater and a final plan for soil and wetlands and surface water until likely the end of this calendar year or possibly early in January. So I don't have much to report on that, but again, our, our purpose for tonight is to really, um, briefly describe this investigation that we, uh, Olin will be conducting, uh, in the next few weeks. So with that, I'd just like to, uh, introduce James Cashwell. He's with, uh, Olin Corporation and, uh, he's gonna provide a little bit more detail on the nature of the investigation.
Mr. Cashwell from, uh, Olin Corporation, if you could just describe as to what residents should really be expecting, when and, uh, and what they're gonna be seeing and hearing.
Sure. Um, you know, thank you, uh, Mr. Hull and, and thank you to the selectmen for having us tonight. And just to reiterate, um, Ms. Jennings said, um, US EPA is requiring Olin to conduct additional investigation and the point of that investigation is to resolve data gaps associated with site groundwater. Um, and, and, you know, we wanna present one of the technologies, uh, we plan to-
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Cashwell, if you could just bear with us for a moment.
Sure.
Yeah, if you have the ability to, to speak a little bit louder as well, that, that might maybe mitigate the issue a bit. Uh, but what I was able to hear was that, uh, this is a part of the data gaps investigation. It's gonna be involving low-flying helicopters.
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Hopefully you can hear me. Um, and, um, and just, just to kinda cut more to it, uh, you know, Lynn provided a lot of good information, yeah, in her preamble. Um, and so, you know, we're gonna do a data gaps investigation in a phased approach and, and each phase will inform the next phase. And the first part, the first phase of this is gonna involve using a few different geophysical techniques. One of them is unique, um, one that we haven't used often at our sites, but we do have experience with it on our team, uh, and we think it's gonna be a, a very good application, uh, for the need. Basically, uh, the technology is intended to help us understand, uh, the topography of bedrock, uh, and specifically in the Maple Meadow Brook area. You know, um, for a lot of these, uh, areas, you know, we can apply sort of land-based, more common land-based techniques, but because of the inundation at the Maple Meadow Brook wetland, you know, we're gonna have to do this from the air. Luckily, we have a technique that, uh, can, can do that, uh, and can do it reliably. So it is, uh, a method that involves a helicopter. Um, we'll traverse the area with an electromagnetic sensor. Um, and the, the method obviously is aerial electromagnetic surveying. Um, and I have a hard time saying that sometimes, I'm just gonna say AEM if that's okay. Um, and so, um, as Lynn said, EPA has approved this method as part of our work plan. Um, and, uh, and just here on the first slide, I, I can't see the slides from, uh, from my computer setup. Hopefully you have them in front of you. Um, but basically, um, you know, here on the first slide shows just the general setup. So the sensor and all of that equipment is gonna be shipped to the Olin property at 51 Eam Street. Uh, we'll assemble it there and then the helicopter will, will pick it up and fly, um, sort of a test run, uh, on our property, uh, at the containment area. Uh, we know a little bit more about bedrock there than we do in some areas, so that'll give us a good test. And then we'll fly straight over to Maple Meadow Brook and, and, um, there we go, I can see it now. Fly it over to Maple Meadow Brook and, um, and so we'll talk a little bit more about that. Uh, so the, on the next slide, um, you'll see that this, this is kinda what it will look like. Um, the sensor may look a little bit different, but this is generally what we should expect. Um, and because of, you know, because of the helicopter, because of this thing, it's dragging, you know, we expect that there might be some people who wonder what's going on and may call you. And so that's the whole purpose tonight, is just to help inform you and arm you with the information, um, should people call and wondering what's going on. Um, listen, the base of the, the basis of the AEM method is, um, is this, this sensor basically sends down an electromagnetic, um, signal and, and it can, um, and it will respond based on various, uh, conductances of the materials in the subsurface. And so what that kinda means in layman's term is, um, based on the electromagnetic properties of the, of the groundwater of the bedrock underlying, um, will help us generate a topographic map of the bedrock surface. Um, and there'll be geophysicists, um, onboard who will be able to, um, collect that data and look at it real time, um, to help make sure that, that, uh, all the appropriate data is being collected. Um, certainly people who are smarter about this stuff than I am, uh, and that's, and that's good. So, um, but as you can see here, it's a low, it's a low altitude. We expect to fly this about a hundred feet, um, in the air and, um, and it's a pretty small area, relatively speaking, and so, um, we should be able to complete this work in just a couple of hours. Uh, so our expectation is from setup time to flight time to land back at the Olin property is generally a half a day. Um, and so it's, uh, it can be done pretty quickly and generate a lot of information, uh, in the meantime. Once they land, uh, the geophysicist onboard will do a quick data check and if there's anything that is anomalous or anything that they missed, the flight lines that they missed, um, they can pop back up in the air and go, and go back and get it. So, um, uh, so we're, um, you know, we're excited to get started on this and, um, and we plan to do it the week of November the ninth. Um, and as Lynn said, we, I think we have provided some information. I think we sent a letter to the, to the town, um, that hopefully, hopefully you receive with a fact sheet that's got some more information on it. Um, and, um, uh, and so, yeah, it should just take, uh, basically a day. And once, once, we don't have a, a definite day yet, um, we're working with the vendor to determine that. And once we have that information, we'll pass it along. I'll just pass it along through Jeff Hull, if that's okay. Um, and we'll let everybody know the exact date. Um, and we also, the flyers that we intend to put in people's mailboxes, um, budding the area that's gonna be flown, the intention is to have, you know, a more concrete day, um, on that, on that flyer as well. Uh, so the next, um, the next, it just shows the flight area and I hope we can see the slide well. Uh, there's two red circles, a small one and a big one, and, and the lines that you see within those circles are the flight lines. Um, they're about fifty feet apart and, um, believe it or not, the helicopter can fly those pretty tight. Uh, we've got a, you know, a, um, a very good licensed helicopter pilot that's gonna help us with this. Um, and again, you can see down on the, in the, within the little circle is the containment area, the flight lines that are, um, that are, are shown there. And then they'll head straight over to Maple Meadow Brook, fly all those lines, uh, and then we should be done. So, um, so very simple. Um, and again, you know, what we wanted to do tonight is just to show you this is what it's gonna look like. Um, and so when you see this helicopter dragging this thing, you know, within the Maple Meadow Brook, uh, area, um, everybody will, uh, be comfortable that it's, it's, um, it's nothing that's, um, you know, intrusive or harmful or anything like that. So just to sum up, uh, these are the three slides I had, just to sum up, um, this is a, this is gonna be a very helpful technique. It's EPA-approved, very straightforward application, uh, very non-intrusive application. Um, and, um, and, 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 you know, good thing is it'll, it'll avoid disruption of the wetlands. We won't have to get in there and do anything, um, uh, that may disrupt that, that, that system. So, um, done in a day, um, we'll have valuable data from it and, um, and then we can carry on to the next, uh, the next part, the next scope of this, uh, of this data gaps investigation. That's really all I had. Um, I just wanted to very quickly again, show you kinda what to expect and, and I'm happy to answer, um, any questions if I can.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Cashwell. So, um, I guess, is this weather dependent? So if you could, if you are anticipating on a certain day, uh, having this and, uh, it turns out that it is gonna rain or it's gonna be particularly windy, is that something that you're gonna have to put off?
I would imagine that if, if it's a really windy, uh, day, you know, the pilot, the helicopter pilot might have something to say about it. Uh, rain won't affect it, um, unless it's, you know, a lot of thunder and lightning. Uh, you know, we'll have to play that by ear or certainly we have those contingencies built into our timing. Um, but, uh, you know, some, some rain, you know, I would, I would imagine, you know, some small amount of wind is not gonna hurt, but we'll have to leave that up to the expertise of the pilot, you know, and his responsibilities at the FAA.
And how, when, when you say that the flight's gonna be about a hundred feet off the ground, is that the altitude of the helicopter? Is that the al- Is that the altitude of the apparatus that's being, I guess, draped down from the helicopter?
We expect that that's going to be the elevation of the helicopter.
And how much further below is the apparatus that's conducting these, these tests?
It's about 20 feet, 25 feet, if I remember my information correctly.
Did any other members have questions or comments?
Just a quick question, maybe a silly question. Does it matter the, the season? And what I mean by that is, do you need to do it before the, the water freezes over? Or, you know, before winter hits? Or do you need to do it right now? Or do you have to then wait until the spring? When, when, does this apparatus, it's able to detect issues even if it's iced over? I mean, I'm not a technical guy, so I don't know.
And that's a, not a silly question at all. It's a very good question. And the experience that we had previously with this, some members on my team used it in Alaska through permafrost. So, so it will, you know, it, it's not, it's not seasonally dependent, I guess, just to answer the question straightforward. So we're, you know, we're fine doing it now. If for some reason we had to put it off a little bit, it won't hurt us at all. So we feel perfectly good about doing it this time of year, but if we had to do it later, we could, I think, with no problem.
Mr. Bendel.
Chairman, thank you very much for letting us know and giving us the heads up on this. My only request, it may have already been granted, but through you, Mr. Hall, if we could just let the police know that way, when, if folks inevitably call the police wondering why there's a helicopter, they'll know the answer on that particular day or week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, I wanted to thank all of you, but if you don't mind sticking around, we do actually have a, a board to consider item for the All In Access License and Agreement. Mr. Cashwell's employer, Olin Corporation, and our special town council, Dan Deutsch, had drafted an access license agreement that is somewhat similar to previous ones that we've done. Mr. Hall, if you want to provide a little bit of context here?
Yes, this again is part of the ongoing effort to fill in the gaps, so to speak, with respect to the data that is required by EPA to further delineate the contamination issues. In, in this particular case, the type of work that's being done is through seismic testing. Perhaps, Mr. Cashwell, if you could just talk about more specifically the types of testing that will be done through this effort?
I couldn't hear you that well. Jeff, were you asking me to explain that, or were you asking Lynn?
Yeah, I can, I'm a little bit closer to the microphone, Mr. Cashwell. So yes, Mr. Hall was asking if you could explain the types of testing that is going to occur pursuant to the access license and agreement.
Certainly. The, the main part of it is to do us, what we call a seismic investigation. All the stuff that I just talked about with respect to the AEM, the aerial surveying, on the properties that we're asking for from the town, we can do, you know, land-based testing, but it'll be a similar thing. And so the seismic effort is basically, you know, rows of locations where we'll set off a very small charge, basically, that will send a, you know, a pulse down to the bedrock, and then that pulse will bounce back up and we'll pick it up on a sensor. And so, you know, when I say charge, I mean tiny, like some very small charge, you know, not explosive or anything like that. So, so, but we have several of these lines, and it's very, you know, the, each line that we have, and, you know, each of these locations are very important to us developing, as I said before, a more thorough understanding of the bedrock surface, which is going to be important for all the next phases of work that we have to do, remedial planning, et cetera. So, so that'll be the primary thing, trying to understand what the bedrock surface looks like. There'll probably be some geoprobe points, and what I mean by that, geoprobe is kind of a trade name for a small drill rig that just pushes holes in the, you know, direct push holes in the ground, you know, or steel tubes. And we'll push down to verify that the seismic was, was reliably correct. You know, we need to sort of do a hard drill in some locations just to verify that data and make sure it's telling us what we think it's telling us. And in some cases, we may install a monitoring well or, or some monitoring wells to monitor groundwater conditions in areas where we don't currently have monitoring wells. It's going to be very important data also. And, and that really explains, I think, you know, the various types of analytical methods that, that we'll be employing, you know, under, under the terms of these, this access agreement. And we, we very much, we've had, you know, we were laser-focused on trying to get the feasibility studies done to support EPA's proposed plan that was published, and that was, that was very good. And then we became, you know, singularly focused pretty much on these data gaps and trying to get things done along those lines. But we've had a very difficult time getting access to several properties in the town. We had hoped that we would find a little bit more cooperation from some of the, from some of the property, property owners, but that has been a, that's been a tall order so far. We have access to quite a few, but there's a few that are still remaining. So, so we really appreciate you, the Board of Selectmen, and, and Mr. Hall and Mr. Deutsch, you know, working with this and developing this access agreement. We're, we're happy with it, and our, you know, as, as you have it, I think you have an executive copy from us, so we would really appreciate your serious consideration.
Ms. Jennings and Mr. Fontaine, I wanted to, as the representatives from the EPA on the call, I wanted to give you the opportunity to chime in if you wish to.
Yeah, thank you. You know, it is, again, this is important work, and we, you know, we know through all the comments we received on our cleanup plan, that the town and the residents are really interested in us, you know, issuing the next phase of cleanup, basically, coming up with the final plan for groundwater. You know, we can't do that until we close these data gaps. We're actually, you know, trying to proceed on two things at the same time. We're working on, you know, the response to comments and coming up with this interim plan, while we're also trying to push Olin to be, you know, have a more aggressive schedule to do this investigation. I will say, it's a little frustrating now, not getting access to some key properties. And again, as James said, thank you, you know, or, you know, the town is moving forward on theirs, but we still have probably 11 parcels that are critical. And that could really slow us down if we have to end up using enforcement authorities, you know, to gain access. That's going to slow us down, and that's really unfortunate. So I'm, you know, we'll, we'll be probably coming back to you all again in the near future, once we have a better understanding for how much more we need to do to gain access. But, you know, give, we're willing to give a more detailed presentation to the town and to the community about exactly where we're going to be doing this investigation, what parcels, you know, where we're putting seismic lines, where we think more monitoring wells are needed. You know, that's part of our plan, is to basically explain that further as we go. But, yeah, there's, you know, it's important, and again, we're appreciative that you guys are proceeding, at least with the, you know, the access agreement for the parcels that the town owns.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. I did want to, after our no objections, open it up to board members for questions or comments as well.
All right, now, just, so these are town-owned parcels we're talking about. How do we get to the point where we can get the other parcels that are so critical to this process?
Yes, so that's, it's a really good question. I mean, right now, Olin is, is negotiating with individual property owners. To the extent they're not being as responsive, EPA has also reached out to some of these property owners. Some of the parcels are a little confusing because, you know, for example, one parcel, the owner is deceased, and so we're trying to figure out who is actually in control of the parcel that can make decisions like this and sign an access agreement. So, you know, we're going through our, you know, routine series of steps to try to gain access, you know, working, you know, with Olin first. And, you know, if that doesn't fail, that, if that doesn't work, then the agency will have to take, you know, probably more aggressive actions with some of these parcels. We have pretty broad enforcement authorities to gain access when we really need it, but, you know, it has to go through, you know, a process, and if, if an entity doesn't comply, that's enforcement action. So we're right now in the, you know, trying to be, you know, more, work with people in a cooperative manner, find out what their concerns are, see if they can be addressed in the agreement itself, or changes in the language. And if that doesn't work, and, you know, property owners are still reluctant to give us access, then we'll, we'll take, like I said, a more aggressive approach with enforcement. Hopefully, we won't have to do that, because, you know, we have a lot of work to do here, and we'd rather do this, obviously, with a cooperative spirit from all the property owners.
I agree. Thank you.
No other questions? So unless there's any objections, we could move to the item number seven on the agenda of the Board to Consider, the signing the access lease and agreements for Olin Corporation allowing for the conduct of groundwater monitoring and sampling activities in compliance with fieldwork authorized by the United States Environmental Protection Agency.
I'll move to sign the access lease and agreement from Olin Corporation as a right.
Second.
I have a motion for Ms. Omahoney, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Further discussion? See none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Pass. Thank you, and have a good evening, folks.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hall, Communications.
Yes, under Communications, first item is the certification of free cash. This is, was through the efforts of Brian Perry, pulling everything together in terms of the closeout for prior fiscal year. And so the Department of Revenue has determined that the town's free cash balance as of 7/1/2020 Next, under Correspondence, is a letter signed by the Chair to EPA with respect to the Olin Superfund Site Cleanup. This is the non, so-called non-technical letter that a number of us have worked on. And without going through it in great detail, I would note, just in, in summary, that it speaks to the serious challenges that have been posed by the contamination associated with the Olin property, and really implores EPA to seriously consider the comments, both in this letter as well as the technical letter from our consultant, addresses the various issues that were discussed in prior meetings, the DAPL. The, you recall the discussion about 5,000 nanograms per liter of NDMA removal. It's strongly encouraging EPA to pursue that, reducing that amount, that target amount rigorously going forward. And also talks about the importance of avoiding any kind of an inter-basin transfer when water, groundwater is removed from the Ipswich and the Abidjona watershed and treated. So those are just some of the comments that are offered in this letter. Next, under Correspondence, is the GeoInsight Technical Comment Letter to EPA. It touches on some of the same issues that were addressed in the non-technical letter, references the, again, the target amount of 5,000 nanograms, recognizing that this is an interim step, as Lynn Jennings noted, the ability for them to further evaluate lowering that number is really contingent upon their ability to fill these data gaps, which, again, presumes access to the property. And then there are other details here that are addressed, suggesting in part the combination of a couple of different EPA options with respect to addressing the groundwater contamination. So next on the agenda is an email from Selectman Bendel, and I'll let him address the OPM discussions related to the Senior Center.
Thank you, Mr. Hall and Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for this opportunity. If you'll indulge me, I'll just briefly read this into the record if there's an objection. Okay, on this past Friday, I wrote to yourself and to the manager, "Dear members of the Board, on Thursday, October 15th, the Senior Center's Owners Project Management, otherwise known as OPM Committee, held two remote interviews with the potential OPM candidates, Hill International and Collers International. And then on Monday, October 19th, the committee interviewed STV-DPM and project planning professionals, otherwise known as P3. Each interview was roughly an hour to an hour and a half. Each candidate got to introduce themselves, share a PowerPoint presentation, and then answered questions from each of the committee members. All four groups gave very good presentation, and we appreciate their interest in working with the town of Wilmington. The video of the interviews has since been posted on the WCTV's YouTube channel for members of the public to view, and the committee will next meet tomorrow night at 6:00 PM to discuss the four candidates and try to come to a decision. At this time, committee members are continuing to check references and research independently in preparation for tomorrow's meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions from the members of the community or the members of the Board regarding our progress, and I will be sure to keep you, the Board, apprised of any few further developments." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Next, under Correspondence, is a-
Just have a question, Mr. Bendel, Mr. Chair. The meeting tomorrow night, is that going to be live for the public to see, a Zoom meeting, I'm assuming?
I believe the answer is that we are under the same operation we have for all the meetings, that the meeting will be, is live, is accessible via the web, and then will be recorded and shipped off to WCTV then to be aired, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that's right.
And the other, I see that the other meetings are on YouTube channel. I'm not a computer person, so I usually flip on the TV to see it. Is that, are these going to be on the regular cable TVs? Or what's-
I would hope so. That would leave that to our friends at WCTV to answer. They might be better suited for that. That's my hope.
I mean, this being a very important project for the community, I would think that, I mean, I don't know how to go on the YouTube stuff, but you would think that it would be important for the residents to see this on WCTV, so.
I agree, and I also want to thank our IT Director, John O'Neill, and his staff, who I know shipped these videos off the very next day to WCTV, so that they could be hopefully broadcast to the community some form of-
Well, if I just may interrupt for a minute, I think there was some technical issues with uploading the videos, because I was asked to, to check in on it when it wasn't published right away. And there was some, they were having some technical issues with getting them on the TV and the website. That's why they were uploaded so quickly to the WCTV YouTube page, so at least they'd be accessible through a web link to be watched. But I think that's, there was no, they're having some technical issues around the videos for some reason, but they were all uploaded to the YouTube link. They did share it on social media. I think Selectman Bendel shared it on his social media. And I know the seniors were, were getting access to it through that way, at least, but that, I, I don't think they're live, or they weren't live as of last week because of some technical issues WCTV was encountering with, however the video was.
And we did get to that point, we did get some feedback. I appreciate the residents who reached out to me, particularly a couple from the Senior Center, who, who watched all seven hours of the meetings, interviews, and gave some feedback, so I appreciate the feedback.
So I, I can check on the ability to get it on the channels themselves, but it's, I'm not sure exactly when, when that timeframe is, when it will happen.
Thank you.
Next is correspondence from Terry Marciello, Director of Elderly Services, just noting their efforts to assist the seniors with respect to getting to the poll, early vote- the poll, uh, early voting, uh, and she notes here that the dates that, uh, the van is, uh, has been available to, uh, transport seniors, uh, to the town hall, um, Monday, October 19th, obviously passed, Tuesday, the 20th, the 21st, uh, the Thursday, the 22nd, Friday, the 23rd, today, the 26th, and again, uh, tomorrow, the 27th, uh, and then Wednesday through Friday, uh, hours 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. If individuals are looking to schedule the time to, uh, receive a ride, uh, they should call the center at 978-657-7595. Next, under, uh, correspondence is a, uh, a joint, uh, letter from the, uh, joint memo from the Superintendent of Schools, Glenn Brand, and myself, uh, just recapping a meeting, uh, that, uh, a conference, uh, call that took place, uh, last week, uh, with representatives from MSBA, uh, specifically Catherine DiChristofaro, uh, who's the Capital Program Manager, and Jennifer Flynn, the Project Coordinator. Uh, they had asked for, uh, the opportunity to check in with us, uh, to find out where the town was in light of our COVID situation. Uh, they're doing this with all the communities. Uh, the other members on the call, uh, were Chairman Eaton, uh, School Committee Chair, Jen Bryson, Superintendent of Schools, Glenn Brand, Paul Regiro, George Hooper, and myself. Uh, they were asking, uh, whether the town was still interested in pursuing, uh, the SOIs and then also wanted to get a sense of what our financial circumstances are at the moment. Uh, we all, in unison, basically indicated that, uh, the town is still interested, uh, in pursuing the SOIs, uh, and certainly, I, I pointed out that the town, uh, while we are concerned about, uh, the next fiscal year in light of COVID, uh, we are, uh, still in a solid position. Uh, we went through, explained that the refinancing that was done on our existing, uh, high school borrowing, uh, and they indicated, MSBA that is, that it's not clear whether the 2020 program, uh, at this point will actually go forward, but, uh, they're concluding their conversations with communities within the next couple of weeks and once decisions are made, they will be back in touch with us to let us know where things stand. Uh, next is, uh, a letter from Colonel Christopher Mason, Massachusetts State Police, uh, expressing appreciation for the, uh, efforts provided by the town on behalf of, uh, State Trooper Thomas Devlin, uh, his, the wake and funeral, and I'll just read this into the record. Uh, "As Colonel of the Massachusetts State Police and on behalf of the men and women of the department, I would like to thank you for your generous support provided during Trooper Thomas Devlin's wake and funeral. We sincerely appreciate the sympathy, presence, and overwhelming support bestowed on such a sad day. Without your assistance, the monumental task of coordinating and accomplishing these services under the current health restrictions would not have been possible. As a department, we mourn the loss of Trooper Thomas Devlin, uh, number 0891. It is comforting to know that the department, uh, we work so closely with, uh, were there for us, assisting and supporting us, uh, during this solemn occasion. With gratitude, Colonel Christopher S. Mason, Superintendent." Uh, then, uh, final item under correspondence was a press release, uh, issued by Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation. Uh, she, along with the, uh, the Open Space and Recreation Committee, is, uh, in the process of updating the five-year, uh, Open Space and Rec Plan, and one of the, uh, efforts is to, uh, conduct this survey to check in with residents and get, uh, opinions from residents about, uh, what they would like to see in their Open Space and Rec Plan. Uh, this, uh, part of the plan is intended to, uh, establish what has been accomplished in the, uh, prior five years as also, as well as to set goals going forward. Uh, so, uh, folks are asked to participate in the survey. It will run through November 16th. Residents of any age, uh, can take the survey. And, uh, the link, uh, you can go to, uh, www.surveymonkey.com/r/wilmingtonopen space 2020. Uh, if you have any questions, you can contact the planning office at 978-658-8238.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. The next item on the agenda was the access lease and agreements for Olin Corporation, which we dealt with, uh, under appointments. Uh, so on to agenda item number eight, the board to consider the request of Louis Semaglia, Director of the Department of Veteran Services, that the Wilmington Town Common be illuminated in green during the month of November in support of veterans. Uh, this is, uh, we've been doing this for several years now, the Green Light of Vet Program. It's a campaign to establish visible national support for our veterans by changing one light to green. Green is the color of hope, renewal, and well-being. Green light is also a term commonly used to activate forward movement. The simple action of changing one light to green is intended to spark a national conversation regarding the recognition of veterans and green light them forward as valued members of our community. Uh, this is Mr. Semaglia's letter. He's respectfully asking that the town of Wilmington place green lights on the town common for the month of November to show our continued support for the veterans from all eras that live in Wilmington, and he would like to support and thank us for our consideration with this request and then for, uh, for our tremendous support in the past for Wilmington's veterans population. With that, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to grant the request of Mr. Semaglia.
Shall we?
Second. Uh, motion by Mr. Kyra, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous passes. The next, uh, item on the agenda is also from Mr. Semaglia. It's the board to consider the request of Mr. Semaglia, the Director of Veteran Services, to use the town common on Wednesday, November 11th, 2020 for the Veterans Day ceremonies, an invitation for the Board of Selectmen to participate. I'll read into the record his letter. Uh, "Dear Chairman Eaton, the Wilmington Department of Veteran Services invites you and the Board of Selectmen to participate in the remembering and honoring of our past and present veterans on Wednesday, November 11th, 2020. We will assemble at the Fourth of July parking lot at 10:45 AM and proceed to the town common for this year's Veterans Day ceremonies at 11:00 AM. We respectfully request to use our town common for the ceremonies, but I'd also like to invite you to say a few words, if you would like, on behalf of your Board of Selectmen. On a personal note, I'd like to thank you and the board for the continued support of all the veterans of Wilmington's, not just on Veterans Day, but year-round. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact our office." I will entertain a motion to-
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Ms. Omahoney. All those in favor? Unanimous passes. Next item on the agenda is number 10, board to consider the request of John Romano, the President of the Wilmington Sons of Italy, to use the municipal parking lot and Fourth of July building for the annual Antique and Collector's Car Show on Sunday, July 25th, 2021, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I'll actually note that the letter requests, uh, some time, uh, for setup and breakdown, so it would actually be from 7:00 AM, uh, in the morning and, and until, uh, 4:00 PM, uh, that day. So, uh, I'll also just, uh, note that, uh, the event will be the same as in past years and will be collaborating with the Dominators Car Club. Uh, there will be a charge for show cars to enter. Uh, they are expecting about 125 show cars. The Sons of Italy will be selling hot dogs, hamburgers, sausages, snacks, soda, water, and coffee, and donuts and muffins at the event as well. Uh, and certainly, uh, this is all subject to any restrictions, changes, or amendments needed due to COVID-19. Uh, they have been coordinating with the Wilmington Farmers Market that will be taking place on the Swain Green on that area as well. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Omahoney, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Further discussion?
Just one quick, um, mention that the event is free to the residents of Wilmington. I want to make sure-
Thank you, Mr. Kyra.
Just the cars are being, you know, charged-
Yep.
But the event for the, for the public is free.
It's an important distinction, so thank you, Mr. Kyra. Further discussion?
I would just want, it, they've already referenced it in the letter, but just to, when we give them the approval, we just note that obviously it's subject to whatever's going on at that time, like we've been doing with kind of all the other 2021, um, events, that, you know, we'll give them some type of notice if we don't think it's something they're going to be able to hold within a few weeks of the event, but that they should be aware that it's contingent on whatever's happening COVID-wise.
Further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous passes. The next, uh, item on the agenda is, um, I think borrowing a page out of the school committee's, uh, playbook, uh, where they'll do a second reading of a policy prior to, uh, either finalizing it, but at our, our previous meeting, we'd done a, really a first reading of a, uh, remote participation policy and we'd had a discussion about a number of edits, uh, and I wanted to make sure that those edits were accurately incorporated into, uh, the, uh, this policy before we circulated it to other boards, committees, and commissions, uh, for their input. Uh, so we do have the amended or edited, uh, version of this policy and I just wanted to, uh, I guess get feedback and make sure that there's, uh, all of the edits that we discussed have been incorporated. The version in front of you has been redlined, uh, to help highlight the, uh, changes that have been made. All right, so I will entertain a motion to consider those revisions to the draft remote participation policy before circulating to the other boards, committees, and commissions. Again, we're not adopting this, we're just, uh, accepting the revisions as previously discussed and then, uh, Mr. Hall and I will then, uh, circulate it to the other boards, committees, and commissions with the exception of the Commission on Disabilities, which has its own, uh, procedure to go through if they wanted to adopt such, adopt such a policy.
I'll make a motion to consider the revisions to draft remote participation policy.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Omahoney. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePalma. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous passes. And last item on the board to consider is the meeting schedule for December 2020. Uh, historically, uh, with the holidays at the end of December, we, uh, generally only meet once, absent, existent circumstances, in the month of December. Traditionally, we obviously meet, uh, on the second and fourth Mondays, uh, of, uh, other months. Uh, I would, uh, just point out that the second Monday would be Monday, December 14th, but certainly, uh, in recognition that December is usually busy for everybody, I wanted to put it to the table to, um, see if anyone had any preference for, uh, any dates, whether it's the 14th or otherwise.
Mr. Chair, the 14th is fine. It sort of falls right in the middle of the Mondays, uh, with me anyways, I was-
Yeah, that's a fine date for me.
Perfect.
Anybody want to care to make a motion?
I'll move, have our December meeting under these steps, avoid.
Okay, I'm going to give the motion of Ms. Omahoney, seconded by Mr. DePalma. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous passes. Announcements?
I, I'll, I'll get my soapbox again. I hope everyone has a really safe Halloween this weekend and really considers what they're doing, um, in the midst of what's going on right now, um, and maybe doesn't have the traditional parties that they might have in years past. Um, and also just, again, to reiterate kind of what was said when Tina was on, don't forget to vote, since we won't be seeing each other until after the election, uh, make sure you figure out how to vote and, and get out and vote.
Yeah, I would just echo that, absolutely. Make sure you get out and vote. I will be there at the Shriner's next Tuesday to vote, so I would encourage everyone else to do the same.
Yeah, well, I agree with my colleagues, you know, please be safe on Halloween.
New business. New business, move on to important dates, Mr. Hall?
Yes, important dates, uh, we have October, uh, 27th, uh, voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Uh, also on the 27th, uh, Senior Center Building Committee, virtual, 6:00 PM. Uh, October 28th, uh, last day to apply for mail-in ballot. Also, October 28th, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Uh, October 28th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. October 29th, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And again, on October 30th, early voting, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 31st, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. November 3rd, state presidential election, polls open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM, Shriner's Auditorium, 99 Fordham Road. November 4th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Uh, November 7th, old, uh, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Next Selectmen's Meeting is November 9th, uh, the High School Large Group Instruction Room, 7:00 PM. Uh, November 11th is Veterans Day Ceremony, Town Common, 11:00 AM. Town offices are closed that day. November 12th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And again, on November 14th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Thank you. And last on our agenda is a salute to service. I just want to salute George Veloso, who's a UNS Army veteran, uh, served in World War II from November 14th, 1942 to September 27th, 1945. He's a longtime resident of Wilmington who passed away in 2008. He was a recipient of the European, African, and Middle Eastern Campaign, uh, Silver Star and Purple Heart. So, uh, thank you to Mr. Veloso for his service to this community and this country, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Omahoney, seconded by Mr. Kyra. All those in favor? Unanimous. Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.